Get started. Notice was hereby given, Willis County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the county Justice Office Commissioners Courtroom in 576 West Main Street in Millville, Texas on Thursday, November fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four at ten AM for the purpose of discussing the following items. During the course of the meeting, any discussion of any item, the agenda to be had on executive review session, Willis County Commissioners Court will convene such executive review session in accordance with section five five one point oh one of the President's Code. To any final action, final decision, final vote be required in the opinion of the Willis County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considering such closer executive meeting or session. Then the final decision, final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or the subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court upon notice there of as the county shall determine so with that, I want to call this meeting to order. Madam Chief Deputy Clerk, could you establish the court cases?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Preseid one.
Present.
Commissioner Preseid two.
Present.
Commissioner Preseid three.
Present.
Commissioner Preseid four.
Present.
Our county judge.
Present.
We do have one.
Please stand for the information to wait.
Peter Ring Sandy, we're going to take a moment to recognize one of the great leaders that have left us here in the county, Mr. Yogi Garcia. Dear Lord, we entrust our dear friend into your loving arms. May Jesus welcome him into the promise of heaven, where there is no love pain of loss, only the love of God. Grant them eternal rest and let your light shine upon them. Amen.
Amen. May you see. Go to line number four. We do have a public comment which we can't really study enough.
Thank you, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For your court. My comments and concerns, actually I wanted to be placed on the agenda but had to review in the agenda. I see there is a five day advance filing in form, so I will speak to you in some comment. The particular items that I wanted to speak today on the agenda were the items eleven through sixteen, I believe. And these are items that are interlokal, which the state allows, Title VII. I'm sure that each one of you is familiar with it, particularly section two seventy-one, that speaks about interlokal. Interlocales are not a blanket thing that the county court has the authority to just give out. It is a statute that is afforded by the state of Texas for interlocales, and it speaks on how interlocales are supposed to be entertained by the Commissioners Court as far as the approving of such interlocales. So eleven through sixteen affords a city lifer some interlocales that, and I speak from what I see from the agenda, because it's not very clear on the agenda what is the ongoings behind what was labeled there on eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. I don't know if you're in the agenda item, you're going to speak about contract that you have with the city lifer and what the amount of money is going to be used for the particular project, and if it's going to exceed the fifteen thousand dollars that is allowed by Title two seventy-one, two fifty-one, I'm sorry. So those are the things that are very unclear, and that's what brings me forward. And this is not necessarily just true about these items, it's true about many items. The agenda doesn't really allow the public to understand what it is that you're approving. For example, it says the maintenance of streets. How many streets and what is that contract? The Title VII and particularly seven clearly states that there will be a contract between the entity and the county court as to what is going to be expended and what the project is, whether it's one project, two projects, but each one has to go to the center. The use of the equipment, employees not to interfere with the county work as scheduled. The county pays only the cost that the county would pay if the county did not assist the government entity with their assistance. And again, the amount of cost not to exceed fifteen thousand. Is that fifteen thousand throughout the year? Is that fifteen thousand every project that you are going to afford whatever entity that you are? Particularly, I'm talking about eleven through sixteen, because there is a subject tag inspection, there is police, and sheriff's department, phones, there, and use of the jail, but yet nothing describes what the city lifer is going to reimburse the county. And I know that Commissioner Nanda was going very adamant about spending counties' monies on cities, entities. He always spoke and voiced his opinion against that because that is county money that could be utilized elsewhere. Now, whereas the state allows for interlocales, I think that there should be more clarity as to what the spending is going to be and how the city will reimburse the county for whatever manpower, material costs, and equipment that is used. So that's why I stand before it, and I ask that that be more clear. It is very hard for the county court to approve items eleven when it's just a blanket. Maintenance of streets, you know, and then there's another one that talks about maintaining water lines outside of the city limits. Well, you know, now you're talking into CCNs. Most of the water outside of the city lifer is by North Alabama. So, yes, sir.
We do have a three minute okay tonight. Allow it to go over, try and see if we can wrap it up.
I'll go wrap it up. Certainly, I thought we have three minutes provided, and I don't want to take all your time. But I think that is something that is a concern. I think that the DA alluded to a particular item last week on how it wasn't clear what you were approving. And I think we just need to be more clear, and I think we need to be more conscious of how our monies are spent. And again, whereas the state allows for interlocales, we need to be clear that those entities reimburse the county for those monies. I thank you, Judge, and thank you for the attention.
Can we go to line item number five, the full of pains, or are they ready?
Yes, sir.
Move to for the judge.
I know, for the other side, Commissioner Garcia. We entertain the second. Second, by Commissioner Garcia, no discussion, all in favor, sign the five, say aye. Aye. And all opposed, same side, motion carries. Commissioners, with your permission, I'm going to bring up line item number twenty-seven, discussion next to a full updating and increasing employee retirement benefits, and simply because we do have a representative on the line in case there's any questions. What this is, Commissioners, is that this is increasing the employee retirement benefits by a quarter. We have not visited that since two thousand and seven, and since then, throughout the years, we have been paying a rate that has been higher than what's mandated in order to obtain the benefits that we currently have. So we've been doing that throughout the years. So we're able, we've put ourselves in a position, and I might include employees, employees and department heads and elected officials have put us in a position where we're able to increase the benefits without increasing the rate. Now, having said that, there is a potential in years to come that perhaps it will increase, but it will not increase this year for sure, and we'll look to see it the next year. So what I'm proposing that we do is that we increase it to two twenty-five. And if there's any questions pertaining to that, the other thing that's factored in that rate is they keep up, they meaning the retirement system, and she can allude to this, that they take in consideration the number of employees that we currently have that are on retirement age, and they consider that factor that if, you know, these employees, including elected officials that have been employees for a lengthy time, that they are about to retire or potentially will retire. So all of that is factored into the rate, and we're able to do that without increasing the rate. I think that this is a great way, in my opinion, to visit this increase when you effectively have worked at it and you're proactive to be in this position. I think elected officials, employees deserve to have these benefits increased if it's if it's obtainable without having to have an increase in taxes, as example. So that's what I'm proposing that we do. What is the current rate? The current rate is a...
Well, it's a, I have a total, it's eight point one nine, but there is an insurance percentage factored in for the life insurance that we do provide for employees as well. But that's the number we use to budget. And I think, I'm not sure if Miss, is it Miss Erica on the line?
Yes, sir. Are you on there? Erica? Oh, we're supposed to call her. Let's get.
She doesn't call.
Oh, two, okay. Two down. I don't know the exact rate, Commissioner, but it would increase the current rate that we have been.
Where we're going.
It's two four five?
We're going two point two five.
Oh, yes, it's, yeah, two point two five.
It's two, if I would follow.
It was two going to two point two five, yes, sir. Are you there?
Motion to approve it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign the five, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries. We'll go back to line item number six. Is approval of previous minutes as follows. October tenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting. October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting. October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, addenda number one, regular meeting. October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, public workshop action required.
So, Judge, say again.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign the five, say aye. And all opposed, same side, motion carries. Line item number seven. Text up to provide monthly updates. We didn't have a representative. Good morning.
Good morning, my gentlemen Commissioners. Let me picture again, I'll be providing the two project updates. I'll text up. The first project is FM four ninety, which charging the limits are from FM eighty-eight to FM ten fifteen. The contractor is foremost, and this one has an estimated completion time of August two thousand twenty-five. They're currently working on the flexes and intersection of FM eighty and FM ten fifteen. They finished all the driveways and other S T's, the pipes throughout the project. And for the next project, it's going to be FM fourteen twenty-five. The limits of this project are from SH ninety-six to FM four ninety. The contract is also a foremost paving. And this one, they're currently at a very low percent of completion, estimated completion date of March of two thousand twenty-five, four months out. The contractor already completed the northbound, the subgate and the flex space, so they're currently paving the north, the northbound. And they should be jumping into the southbound the week of the eighteen of this month, but that way we can collect the remaining millings that we have pending, and now we can come together together, let you guys know how much we have, I guess, allocated or estimated for that, for that segment. This is all the projects that I have. I remember, you all have any questions on those two projects?
I do want to clarify, and I know you probably know too much already, but we have submitted the yearly letter.
Yes.
Dispatch from the county saying that we're interested in that particular.
Yes, we're just waiting to, we have the northbound meetings already, start file. As soon as we get the southbound, then we'll compile it all together, and now we can reach out to you guys to see how much, how much you know. You're getting based on that letter.
We're getting some of the fresher stuff, but I'm hoping, since we've been asking like we've discussed, and maybe since we haven't gotten, received anything from twenty-two to now, that we maybe at least get F like twenty-four, we're now at F like twenty-five, some of that. I think we're all kind of looking forward to that. And it looks, actually, that fourteen twenty-five project is, the Commissioner and I split that. The north side, the west side is, and the south side is, is a mine.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the roadway, basically, that's our design. Yeah, it's a precinct line, but we appreciate that of the people out there, too, in that area really do, that they're speeding that up. I don't know, and this is kind of out of my wheelhouse, on eighty-eight. How much further does the county go there?
Well, they're going to do that one from ten fifteen to eighty-eight, and then when they're done, is that about eighty-eight or how long is it?
If it's ours, well, okay, must put to the first curb.
All the way to the right, cause we're. Yeah, I don't know if you need that, but I spoke to Red two couple of months ago.
That's, that's an upcoming project, part of the design.
So he's going to go all the way there, but that one, it's an old concrete road. You're going to have to take all the concrete out of there.
But Mr. Lavina, when I'm going to call him pretty regularly, I appreciate his input on that. I know that we had some road closures in South Carolina with the railroad track, the railroad, they never contacted us, but Mr. Lavina did, and gave us those. I was a little, I was a little surprised to find out the detours that y'all used. It's just county, state to state road.
Yes.
Of course, everybody was going through town, right? But, yeah, I was surprised.
That's what we have to use, yes.
But I appreciate y'all keeping us informed and the citizens, which is what, you know, we want to do, is let them know.
Sure, and as soon as we know, we combine all that means together, we'll get in touch with you all. That way you guys can get their readers.
Thank you for that.
Ms., is it Gutierrez? And I apologize if I got it wrong. Are you on there with the retirement system? All right, so we go to line item number eight. Discussion possible action to adopt guidelines, take criteria governing the granting of tax abatement agreements in reinvestment zones created in M for Willis County, Texas. Possible action required. And Commissioner, this is something that needs to be updated every two years, and as you know, we had the public hearings pertaining to be, to be able to do this. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
So move to approve, Judge.
I have a question by Commissioner Tejera, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign the five, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries. Line item number nine. Discussion possible action to adopt resolution creating Willis County reinvestment zone number five. Authorizing granting tax abatement agreement within such reinvestment zones in Willis County, Texas. Possible action required. And Commissioners, but this is, is the reinvestment zone that we are considering approving for the project of the lifer battery energy storage, which at this point, we're just approving the reinvestment zone.
This is the public hearing that we had earlier?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve, Judge.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign the five, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries. Line item number ten. Discussion action certifying accept grant from V L Local Border Security Program, L B S E, grant number five zero six five two oh one, grant period nine one twenty-four to eight thirty-one of twenty-five, for the Willis County Constable Office, pressing number four.
Constable.
My name is Judge, uh, Commissioner Garcia. This is the border security grant. It's, we had it last year, and we got it ordered again. It's for the amount of ten thousand dollars. There's no match.
No match? So who's the legislating? You guys?
Yes, sir.
And y'all reapplied, and y'all got what you're going to use.
Yeah, you have to fire it. So we reapplied, and we were able to get it.
Okay, I have a motion second, Commissioner Garcia, approved second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign the five, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same side, motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioner.
Thank you. Line item number nine. Discussion act to approve your local governmental agreement with Willis County and the city of Lyford concerning using the lifer prisoners in Willis County Detentions Center, and I think.
Judge, if I may, before you start on this one.
Okay.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are all the notes of existing interlocal agreements we've had with the city of Lyford for, while I've been here almost eight years. So it's been since at least eight years. I'm not going to go beyond that. But these are standard. I don't know if you want to take them up collectively so that you can speak about all of those, eleven through sixteen, since they involve pretty much the same type of contract. But we can go through each one. I can address each one specifically, but you can call eleven through sixteen and take up that deliberation of all those contracts together that may, that may facilitate moving your meeting along.
Do you think we should read them all out and then?
Yes, if you could read all, eleven through sixteen, and take all those up together.
All right, so I read eleven. Number twelve, discussion act to approve your local agreement, agreement with Willis County and the city of Lyford regarding the use of county police radio and dispatch services action required. Discussion act to approve your local agreement with Willis County and the city of Lyford concerning fire marshal. Discussion action to approve your local agreement between Willis County and the city of Lyford concerning the maintenance of city streets and right of ways action required. Discussion act to approve your local agreement between Willis County and the city of Lyford concerning the maintenance of the city, distribution lines, and in the county right of ways action required. Discussion act to approve your local agreement between Willis County and the city of Lyford for environmental services and, in parentheses, subject tank inspections to be included. Those are the line items.
Judge, if I can, if I can just kind of, so if I've already reviewed the contracts, I can kind of summarize it a little bit.
Okay.
Number eleven has to do with the city of Lyford Police Department. They do not have a city jail, so they typically house our, their, the people that they arrest at the sheriff's office, the sheriff's, the county jail. Not in the sheriff's office, that would be off. It says in the county jail. And so this one is a reimbursement rate, or a rate of forty-five thousand, forty-five dollars per day with, you know, any other health care costs that are included are reimbursed by the city, by the city of Lyford to the, towards the county. I don't know if there's any questions on that one. So then the next one has to do with, again, the city of Lyford, the police department does not necessarily have the equipment that the sheriff's office does, and so typically, they've assisted with providing those types of the usual. And so typically they've assisted with providing those types of the use of the county police radio and the dispatch services. So that includes an agreement to be able to, uh, use the police dispatch services by the city of, uh, Lyford's police department. Again, this is just a renewal. There's no, um, cost involved in it. It's just a matter of being able to access it for obviously public safety purposes. And, uh, this one comes up every year for renewal again. So there's no questions on that one. And the next one has to do with the use of the county's fire marshal. Again, it goes, it goes to the fact that, uh, the county has assisted typically the city of Lyford on services that are not, uh, necessarily readily available. And it's the use of the fire marshal to inspect buildings, uh, within the city limits of, uh, of Lyford. Uh, there's no, there's no, uh, cost involved in that. It's essentially just the use of the fire marshal to be able to sign off on the documentation, the fire, the occupancy, uh, requirements and going through those fire checks. Again, another public safety issue or, uh, concern for that. Then the next one, which has to do with the city streets. Uh, and I, I know that, uh, so Commissioner De La Paz, I don't know if you want to add to that, but that, that would be where, uh, the city streets, um, and right of ways are maintained by the county, by the city. Uh, use occasionally, there are streets that have part of it is the county and the other part is the city, where there's kind of cross, um, uh, this cooperation to be able to maintain those roads. That's what it comes down to occasionally. There may be a, um, a use involved of needing to use. Like, you might be able to talk about that a little bit better than I would.
And, and, uh, in some of those instances, we'll have, uh, they'll be able to use some of the equipment. Well, we use our equipment on the city, uh, right of way, uh, in order for us to, uh, you know, cover some potholes or, or that.
Clean a ditch, I think is the only thing I can mention.
Clean a ditch, uh, anything like that. But, uh, we, we are very, uh, cautious of what we do and, and normally it's a joint effort between the city and, and the county.
And, and it's a one hundred percent reimbursement rate. So if there's anything that's used product wise, on each, uh, things of that nature for the roads, it's a one hundred percent reimbursement to the county by the city for anything that that would, that that would be needed. Um, in, in those instances, those are just records that are submitted and, and, and turned into the county. And then number fifteen has to do with maintaining the distribution lines, county right of ways. Uh, I don't know, Commissioner, if you want to speak to that as well. It's very closely related to the fire.
Correct. I mean, there's, it's just a joint effort between the, the city distribution lines. Um, some of their, they, they, uh, their water rights go outside the city limits into the county. But, you know, whenever they're going to extend it, they come and ask permission and so forth. But we're not, we're not providing any type of help, uh, in that area, uh, they just maintain it.
And the city pays for any of the leaks that are on their, uh, they might have to go into the county right of ways, but they pay for any leaks because it's their water lines, basically. So it's a hundred percent.
A lot of the citizens outside the city limits are serviced by the water.
Uh, and again, that goes to like Public Works, Public Safety, these are all kind of typical interlocal government agreements. And then the last one, again, related to the previous one is, uh, the environmental services is, uh, the use of and being able to, uh, enforce through the Health and Safety Code, uh, just having the, um, services available. The duties of the municipality is going to be to pay the county a, a monthly fee, uh, whatever that fee is determined, uh, annually. And then to, uh, be able to provide, uh, services there, the environmental services, set, uh, septic tank inspections.
And, and this one, Judge, I do, I do think that isn't a little older one, uh, but we have it in place just in case. Uh, most, uh, residents inside city limits are required to, to, uh, connect to this, the, the sewer services. However, there is parts of the city that are just not feasible. Um, there's only maybe a handful of, of septic services that are inside the, the city limits.
Although, Judge, uh, I know I already mentioned my name and that's what happened the last time. Because it is true, you've got to be very specific on any local, you know, local agreement. And I don't have a problem the county helping out anyone, especially any city here in Vanuville. But I'm not comfortable that way this, uh, agreements are, are done. I know I did one with the other county about two years ago. And, and I knew the one that was in place wasn't the way it should have been. And, Miss, Commissioner Torres mentioned to me, he said, I'm, and they did draw out and you know, also helped me out with it as well. And they were very specific and it's a give and take, uh, interlocal agreement. And when that happened, I didn't agree with it because I was going to get myself, or the county in an agreement that they were, they wanted us to go into on that real beef road.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, that's why I'm uncomfortable because it's not being specific and it's true.
Uh, every, uh, all the, all the interlocals that have come before us, Judge, uh, whether it's the city of Ramenville, um, they, or the city of San Bernardino, uh, are going to use that. You know, uh, they want to be more specific than, you know, going forward. You know, maybe it's a policy that, that he looks, uh, replaces that way. But, uh, I've been here for eight years and every year the, the renewals come up and we, we approve this one.
And, and the only other thing I would add, Judge, is if there is a major, so this doesn't include major projects. It includes, uh, it's just like regular main, regular types of projects. It's not something that's kind of out of your area. It's not, uh, uh, like building a road. That, that's not what that is. I think that the one, the one with Commissioner, that was actually like making a road and having Idaho County come into Willis County and then requiring Willis County to go into Idaho County to maintain, maintain the road once the road was, was elevated. This has, this has, again, it has to do with, uh, septic tank inspections, uh, ma, being able to access the county easements, uh, the right of ways in order to, to be able to get to their like water lines, uh, or their, yeah, their, their, yeah, their lines. Uh, and then maintaining city streets and right of ways as, as needed because it's a mutual. In these cases, it's because it's mutually benefit, benefiting it. And then the use of the fire marshal, uh, and then the dispatch police services and the jail is quite frankly because they don't, they don't have that. And so that's why it's considered a public safety type of, of issue. Obviously, we want to make sure that, uh, it benefits the county to have, uh, the water lines treated and repaired and fixed because then you have citizens who don't have water or waste, uh, wastewater issues, you know, within the, within the city. So that's, that's typically why, uh, these types of interlocals are approved and agreed to because of that. But, uh, and, uh, Commissioner Geras, correct, there's, they're very, it's not real specific, uh, but that's typically, again, for the last eight years, this is the, uh, very standard type of M O U, uh, to interlocal that's going to be for Commissioner's court. You just really start requiring more, um, speci- specificity on, on it. I believe it meets the, the minimum standards, but if you all would prefer something more. Again, uh, Commissioner Geras had dealt with a specific road, so it's a different type of interlocal agreement. This deals with general services to provide to the citizens from, from the city of Lyford.
Right, I, I think the, the, the main thing here is that, um, the, and you mentioned, Mr. Inez, that it's a mutual benefit. And if it wasn't a mutual benefit, I guarantee you that either we as a county or the city of Lyford would have already brought up throughout the years, you're taking advantage of me or vice versa. I think the fact that we can help each other, I think that's what taxpayers would prefer. We put it that way, regardless whether you're in the city or you're within the county. Uh, and, and obviously, the idea here is to stay within the guidelines that, as to what's required. And it seems to me that you're, uh, alluding to that as well. As far as it being within the guidelines.
Yes, sir.
At least to the minimum.
It's, uh, obviously within the, appreciation, right? And, and, and statutory, it's, it's allowed.
Yes.
Would you agree?
I couldn't register something, but I'll do it. But yes, there's a section in the, uh, in the government code that, that authorizes interlocal agreements. And you know, Judge, the county can't profit, you can't take advantage of another municipality. It has to go by fair market value. It's the to the penny reimbursement. It's not a penny over, a penny under. So those are, those are costs that are, uh, that would never, you're not going to make money off of the city of Lyford. The city of Lyford isn't going to make money off of you. And that's, it, it's a, it's a wash.
Yeah, and, but I think this goes off, you know, like into a broader, uh, subject because like, like I said, I mean, this is, this is just interlocals that we, we review. Um, I mean, almost every interlocal, you know, that we do, you know, either, is either this format or, uh, must be upgraded if, if, if that's the case. Uh, maybe because, you know, you know, you know, Commissioner Tejera, you know, the city of San Bernardino is incorporated and, and that's not saying that, you know, and I'm sure those guys need all the help they can get. Lyford's incorporated, they need all the help. You know, you cover part of Ramenville, precinct one now covers part of Ramenville. And, you know, you know, uh, and these are all, uh, voting entities. Now, now the, uh, this is something I've also, I mentioned, you know, many years ago, um, that there is a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, cap, uh, or, or, uh, max that you can spend, uh, per year. And we're very mindful of that. And, uh, this is not something new. This is, this is something that we've known for a very long time. You know, and so, you know, precinct one and precinct four, they're not incorporated, so they don't, they don't have to consider that or they don't even, uh, they don't work on them like that. But precincts two and three, yes, they do.
Judge, and the only one that, uh, I'm, I'm going to recommend to not approve at this time is going to be item number sixteen. Even though it itself is a renewal of an interlocal government agreement, the dates that they made effective, uh, I think they used a old contract and they put the wrong dates in there. So they're going to have to execute a new contract before they come back on that one. But I'll get with the, if, if you, uh, I, we can, uh, potentially you can amend it, but since it's their interlocal agreement, they need to amend it first. What would be my recommendation is to, uh, table item number sixteen, uh, if, for, uh, for those, for that purpose. Not for the substance of it, but because I need to make sure the dates are correct on that.
So Judge, I make a motion to approve items twelve through fifteen.
Eleven, are you considering eleven?
Eleven, eleven through fifteen. And tabling item number sixteen for correction on, on the date.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, committed in a second. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Name. Name.
Oh, and we have, um, Ms. Vasquez, are, are you on there? I just don't want you to be there where you did your line item. Are, are you on? I guess, I just want to make sure that she, she makes it to her means. Okay, line item number seventeen. Discussion act to approve food bank and the Rio Grande Valley to describe food on November twenty-first of twenty twenty-four at the Sebastian Community Center for Sev, Sebastien residents. Action required. I think this is, uh, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. I think this will be the third one. Uh, been utilizing Community Center, and there was nothing else. No one located there in Sebastien. It's been working out really well. The roads are, are nice and done now. And, uh, we get, uh, a lot of people come by that are thinking it's a real good, great service to the community in, in the area. I'll move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Say again.
Approved, second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eighteen. Discussion act to approve reimbursement for two precinct two, Roden Bridge account, sixty-two four, zero zero two zero zero four eight four eight. Double, uh, check valve assembly at the sheriff's department to be paid out of the capital fund. Commissioners, I have several line items that, uh, that I'm going to, uh, propose that we, uh, that, that we, uh, approve through the capital fund. And these are, um, these are situations, uh, that, uh, and I, and I've met with, with, uh, Carmen, our auditor pertaining to this, as to what qualifies under maintenance and, uh, and repairs and maintenance. And then what qualifies as a, a permanent improvement for future, right? And so there's certain line items that qualify. This one in particular, the reason that precinct two is even, uh, involved is that we did have kind of an emergency with this valve. And precinct two was already approved as a, as a, it had an account with this particular company. So what I asked Commissioner and, and he agreed to it was, uh, let precinct two purchase it. Let's take care of the situation, right? And then we'll, uh, come to Commissioner's court. And if Commissioners approve, we'll pay that from, uh, capital fund. It is one of these, uh, situations that falls under what the auditor is saying, uh, can come from capital improvement and not from, uh, repairs and maintenance. Correct. So this is one of them. There'll be others, uh, down the line. Uh, and this one is actually the, the smallest one. Uh, this one is, I think, for, uh, twenty-three, twenty-five.
Three thousand or whatever.
Three thousand. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve, made in a second. Uh, capital fund, uh.
Just, just in time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number nineteen. Consideration motion to pay invoice twenty-four, zero zero two two dash two. And for annual membership fees to the L R G B T P B S Stormwater Task Force. And I know Commissioner Garcia is very much involved, uh, with his, uh, efforts.
Yeah, I believe the, uh, supporting documents are on the, the invoice. Uh, only I'm not exactly sure what board gives, uh, to pay from. This, uh, company is, uh, is at rates, it's a rural applied, uh, technology and education services. They, uh, they keep us informed, um, with the, uh, ongoing situations with, uh, potential flooding and water quality and stuff throughout, throughout the valley. And, uh, they're tied in with the, uh, Stormwater Task Force, which is affiliated with the L R G B D C, they're called. So all, all this is tied in together. They're, they're very informative. Uh, we recently went to, uh, they sponsored us to go to, uh, to a, uh, U S Coast, uh, U S Corps of Engineers, uh, presentation in, uh, Galveston. It was a one day deal. And, uh, actually, the, the main topic of discussion was the Rio Grande Valley and the watershed state. So, uh, and this was all, uh, spearheaded by them. So I, I recommend that we go ahead and, uh, pay this invoice from the, is it going to be from the capital fund or?
I think it's the president.
It's already, it's already, but, yes. I'll move to approve that.
Say again. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejera. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty. Discussion act to approve a request from Willis County Sheriff's Office to hold employee appreciation Christmas celebration at the Sebastien Community Center on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Action required. Uh, commissioners, um, I put this on the agenda, uh, for different reasons, but mainly is because, um, as you know, we do have employee appreciation already, right? But the, the sheriff, uh, uh, office has kind of their own. Used to be, when the previous administration was there, they would have it there in the, in, in the jail itself. But now with this administration, it kind of moved towards the evening. I think last year you did it at the, uh, golf course.
Yes.
Okay, so this year they're asking to do it at the, uh, community center, right? And so I wanted to make sure because, uh, a, as you know, we're still under, technically in agreement with Niños as far as what we can and can't use that building for. Now, since then, I've got clarification that it is indeed, we're just employees and their families. It's not going to be open to the public and it is in the evenings. So, uh, to me, I just wanted to make sure that we were, uh, approving, uh, one of our departments or one of our, uh, departments having, uh, uh, employee appreciation there in that particular facility. And furthermore, it's funded by vendors and not by the budget, is what I'm told.
Okay.
Basically, that's where.
So we need to see the motion?
Yes, sir.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion?
Did you have anything?
No, sir.
The, the only thing I would, I would say, the words, Judge, to make sure that it doesn't, um, yeah.
There's no conflict as far as dates. Okay.
We're good, right?
Judge, and just, just so you know, so if there's donations, I have a line item later on just to address sometimes donations that come in for different events that I have. There's donations coming in. Maybe to keep track of that and submit that for, not, not necessarily for you to ex, well, it typically is to accept the donations. Uh, but it's to, you would be accepting it after the fact that what, what was provided, uh, especially I, I don't know if there's monetary or non-monetary, but for typically, that's what needs to happen when, when there's donations coming in. For accounting purposes and for table purposes too.
Will y'all have a security?
Yes, sir.
Many. Lots of security.
We can pretty cover. Every table? Every table.
Just get me on the keys and the clean.
Okay, so we, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, sign if I'm pressing I.
Aye.
And all opposed same time, motion carries. Line item number twenty-one. Uh, discussion action to repair electrical panel for generator at the Woods County Department, the expense account to be discussed. Okay, Commissioner, this is one of the items that I, that I had mentioned to you. This uh was an electrical panel for the, the generator or generators and uh, and it burned out. Uh, in this case, what happened was that we did get uh approval to, for someone to come and, and look at it to see what needed to be done. And then furthermore, we were provided a quote as to what it would take to get, to get fixed. And I had suggested to the sheriff for him to pay from his budget to get that particular situation back to how it's supposed to be. And then I would come to Commissioners' Court and, and get uh his department reimbursed, right? I do feel, and the auditor is the one that alluded to this, is that she does recommend that it does not come from uh repairs and maintenance, that it's something that again fits into the uh capital improvement. And I certainly don't wanna have the sheriff tap into his budget and blow his budget uh on, on, on things that uh that are not, that do not fall under repair maintenance. So in this particular case, it's my understanding, I thought for sure it would have already been fixed. However, I think there was either lack of communication or maybe miscommunication on my part with the auditor and she just approved the
The purchase.
A purchase order yesterday, I believe. So hopefully it's moving along regardless of whether we approve or don't approve today. But yes, I am recommending that we do uh approve and it's for the amount of nineteen thousand and change, I think. Do you have anything?
Nineteen thousand, eight hundred.
It's like maybe a transfer switch, the, the transfer switch, yeah. And let's say now that uh you don't have utility power, you're gonna be in the dark. So it's a safety issue.
Well, it's, it's also a compliance issue.
Yes.
Uh, and uh, yeah, I, I didn't realize it was that much. Uh, but it's nineteen thousand and change.
So we come under capital improvement?
Yes.
Versus.
And I called to see how much was the actual switch. That's about five thousand. What costs more is the labor and that's like fourteen thousand.
Probably every wire, everything.
Alright, so can I entertain a motion to approve?
We could approve.
Uh, motion Garcia, second by Commissioner Tegarina. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm pressing I.
Aye.
And all opposed same time, motion carries. Line item two, discussion act to approve paying uh exothermic invoice two-zero-sixty-five-eight in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred for roof. Top AC unit replacement, the expense account to be discussed. Uh, Commissioners, this one is uh because uh we do have an account with uh exothermic. They, in essence, uh provided, and you correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not sure on this. It's already been fixed, correct?
Original.
Yeah, so what we're doing here, we, we're actually paying an invoice of, of services and the replacement of the unit rendered. And that was also kind of like a emergency situation where that unit uh burned.
Is it falling under the capital improvement?
Yes, it is, yes.
You, are, are we eventually gonna have like a dollar amount? Does, you know, some of that should come from maintenance, regular maintenance?
Yes.
Uh, maybe not that dollars.
Right, and, and I think the, the auditor is, is kind of um, should I say, guiding me as to what qualifies under repairs and maintenance.
Right, and something that just needs to be fixed and it's a part that just uh, I don't know how to explain it, to, to make it more understandable. Replacing something minor, yeah, that would be repairs and maintenance, like for it to continue um. But if it's something that's gonna extend the life of the, of the equipment or if it, if it's going to be completely new and depending on the cost, then that would go into under machinery and equipment over five hundred. So that's more of a capital improvement of the equipment, so it would go into that other fund. Um, and auditors would probably pick at it or if they choose it, they'd probably say, you know, why wasn't it reported over here? Instead of just a regular repair because it wouldn't qualify.
I think what would make sense, this is maybe for hand here in budget workshops, is to kind of look to see where we've been and maybe there needs to be an adjustment in the budget.
Exactly.
You know what I'm saying? Because if you continue to tap into the capital fund and then how could we be doing it in the past? And that's a question that needs to be uh looked into. We'll see if we need, if we do need to do adjustments to be able to comply with what you're suggesting. At the same time, uh budget accordingly, whether it's from the capital fund or from the repair maintenance from the uh sheriff's office.
And historically, just to, you know, uh, bring my understanding of what, how it's been is it's been budgeted for the matching grants, but if they're not fully expensed in that year, then you do have some funding available and that's where the court would tap into those line items to address issues that came up throughout the year. But I also agree with Commissioner and yourself, Judge, that it's best, maybe we can allocate a certain line during budget workshops and say, this much money we're gonna use for other things that come up, so we won't be tapping into the matching.
Correct. Alright. So uh, with that, can I entertain a motion to, to approve?
No more to approve, the second.
Motion by Commissioner Tegarina, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm pressing I.
Aye.
And all opposed same time, motion carries. Line number twenty-three, discussion action on request for funding for upfitting the Woods County Sheriff's Office jail van with, excuse me, partitions and installation of the amount of seven thousand nine hundred. The expense account to be discussed. This is on the uh, the van that we, that we purchased last year?
Correct.
Last year?
It's a hardening of the security. Twenty-twenty-one fourth, Ford van?
Yeah, we did some, yes.
And, and this might have been one that, and I'm not sure, but it might have been one that I had asked to hold on till this, this year coming up so that we could consider uh tapping into the capital. It's probably one of those that I asked to work on. I'm not sure though.
What, um, on this van, what's going into it? Like, is this partitioned, but what are we, is it gonna be put in the cage for a prison transport or?
Correct.
Currently, what is it using, being used for?
Kind of, they are using it to transport some, but it's gonna be just like local, you know, and um, we're cursing all that, that we can put on trips, you know, they have the long transports and um, other, you know, air-based transport.
Anything happen or nothing prompt that?
Just, just trying to be suitable.
Well, it was, it's definitely needed.
Uh, make a motion to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
To approve and second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion?
Should be paid from where, Judge?
Yeah.
Be paid.
Should be paid with capital fund?
That's your motion and you have to remember your second.
Remember.
Got that in?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I'm pressing I.
Aye.
And all opposed same time, motion carries. Line number twenty-four, discussion action on request for reimbursement for rebuilt transmission of Woodland County Sheriff's Office twenty-twenty Chevrolet Tahoe unit one V two in the amount of three thousand two fifteen. This is one that gave out. I don't know if it's the one that gave out somewhere.
No, sir, that's, that's a different judge. Uh, that, that one's a twenty-thirteen Tahoe. Uh, again, uh, our aging fleet, um, is uh, we're having a lot of issues uh with, with transmissions going out. And so you know, we, we do have some money in the budget, but again, this is, this is what the second one, this one?
This is third.
Third? This, yeah, so we're six weeks into the new fiscal year. Um, at about thirty-two hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars of pot. So it's, it's, you know, it really chews up our budget.
Would this fall under, Ms., Ms. Carmen, under uh repair maintenance or?
Um, it's a full rebuild, right? So it, it completely, you know, extends the life of that transmission as a vehicle, so yes. We've had these before and happened.
I wonder, Judge, Sheriff, if we were to uh, you know, go ahead and pay it out of repair maintenance, would it mindful that other things are happening, maybe, cause it's so early in the budget, maybe help out later on down the road. This is just a suggestion.
They do have money in their, uh, well, that's what the budget amendment was for, but it was intended for the nineteen thousand, right, that uh, earlier, yes. Um, so there will be a budget amendment today and if approved, we're moving nineteen thousand from that amount. And like what you're saying, if you want it to be expensed from them, from their account, that's where it would, it could hit. And if, in the future, they need more funding, then they'd have to come back.
It would be, uh, there's two different repair maintenance uh budget items, right, for the sheriff's office and the jail.
Right, they're separate.
The, the nineteen is going to the jail?
Oh, yes, never mind, it wouldn't be allowable. Yeah, they'd have to do a budget amendment for the sheriff, because this is the sheriff's vehicle, right?
Yes.
Or the van?
No, it's uh, one of the, definitely, it's on the sheriff's, on the federal.
So we would need a budget.
But there's funding in there to cover it?
Yes, they have about forty, uh, about, they have, they have enough to cover this if they move it from another line item, from repairs. So it's about forty-six thousand, if I'm not mistaken. Well, again, for currently, they would need a budget amendment because they got fifty-one thousand uh in the sheriff's department from repairs and maintenance and they, they could do a budget amendment to move the thirty to fifty into the, the, for the expense of this rebuilt transmission. And it could go into the sheriff's uh machinery and equipment line item where it's for capital improvements. If that's what I'm understanding, you would rather have them expense it to their department since it's just a small amount.
That's my suggestion, but, but under repair maintenance.
Well, it's not repair maintenance. It's a, it would be a machinery and equipment line item because it's over five hundred dollars. It's a completely renewing of the life of that vehicle. So any, any purchases over five hundred dollars that extend or make the capital improvement to the vehicle or equipment goes into three eighty-five. And um, yes.
Are the repairs already been done, Sheriff?
Uh, no, we're still pending on that one.
Then who's doing the repair?
Uh, that, that one's gonna be going over to a company out of Holland, Raymond's.
Raymond's? On the loop, right, is it right there?
Yes, sir.
I guess, uh, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Garcia. In a second?
To approve the reimbursement or to approve the, what, the payment? To approve the payment, I mean, if it's not fixed.
And I'm confused, I'm sorry, sir. Uh, it says estimate on top, so, and then it says invoice number, but there's no invoice number, so is this uh an estimate or they're bringing in a work permit?
We're waiting for, for, for them to, to work on the transmission.
Cause it says estimate on hand.
On the beginning of estimate, I think, maybe one of the same page.
Cannot, that needs to be redone, so that's why I'm asking for clarification if it's an estimate or if this is the final invoice. Uh, if the word's been done, we would need to have this revised, but it hasn't been done. That's my understanding, right? Yeah, because we wouldn't need, again, any purchase orders before, you know, um, any any uh services or products are ordered to make sure that there is funding for that amount of line items.
And so Judge, it, it would, it wouldn't be a request for reimbursement, would it be a request to pay and then invoice?
Correct.
And the invoice would be what Carmen is referring to.
Right. You should, you should have, um, paying an invoice without it saying for, or estimate or whatever, right?
I'll, we'll, 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 we'll.
So I have a motion to, to approve.
Correct.
Providing that they provide.
Uh, I'm sorry, is it gonna come out of their department after all or capital?
I would prefer out of the sheriff's budget, but it's up to you. I mean, either way, I just think that, you know, we have money in there for that reason.
Well, I, I have a motion and if there's no second, it dies. So can I entertain a second? The motion dies due to second, and that could second. You want to make a motion?
I, I would, I would make a motion that uh, that it be paid from the sheriff's department for current maintenance uh balance, which they, they, they do have funding. Being mindful that we know this is going on and if they need help on down the road, we'll have to go out as best as we can, especially with this amount. We've, we've hit the capital fund with quite a bit of stuff. Ob- obviously, they have a lot going on over there.
But it can't go into repairs and maintenance, so it'd have to be three eighty-five.
Well, but whatever, it's in their budget.
Okay, within their budget. But also, can you add, if you don't mind, um, approved payment upon invoice? Because the budget amendment, I'll try to do as uh for the next meeting, but just so we won't delay in case they're already done.
Approved payment upon invoice.
Thank you.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second. Second. Second, let's just tell you that we have a discussion. All in favor, sign if I'm pressing I.
Aye.
And all opposed same time, motion carries. Line number twenty-five, discussion action on request for funding to purchase or finance emergency communication system. Dispatch console for the review and mobile review for the Woods County Sheriff's Office from capital fund. I'll be, Commissioner, this is, this is obviously uh one that, that is a higher cost. And I know that it's something that we do need to, to move on. Um, uh, I uh, uh, one of the things that, that I'm looking into and, and um crushes up is that we're paying off the units that we purchased in twenty-twenty. And we're paying uh, where did it come from? Sixty-eight?
Sixty-five thousand.
So, so this November, which is now, in fact, I'm just working on paying that right now, VP. Uh, uh, I, I was thinking of, and I had the sheriff about this, um, is that I know there's several quotes there and, and I apologize, Sheriff, because I know there was an email. And because of Monday, we were closed, I was thinking that Tuesday was the next day. So by the time I realized, you know, we, it was already in the afternoon on Tuesday and you had asked to meet pertaining to, to the quotes.
Yes.
Uh, nonetheless, um, on, on the different quotes that you have, right? Uh, and Commissioners, you can look at the, at the amount, right, and there's different options. They do finance. And there's different options, they do finance, uh, is that, what I was proposing is that, and some of you have, kind of, mentioned this, uh, is about the, well, first of all, is that the, the sheriff, incorrect here for our sheriff, you're adamant, and, and so is, uh, Chief Deputy, I think, uh, um, that Motorola is a vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's the other company that's less, but I think that, uh, the, these Motorola are more durable and so forth. Is that we entertain the idea of purchasing less than the thirty-one? And depending on what that triggers, then we can consider, uh, the shorter route of the amount of years, because obviously the more years, the more interest, right? And, and then we can purchase, as an example, if this is, you know, if, if you'll entertain this, then we can say as an example, fifteen, and, and I know the sheriff is gonna say, I need the thirty-one, right? And, and I understand, but, um, to, to acquire, uh, and then let's say that the payment comes up to a hundred thousand. Well, if, if we consider the sixty-five that we're taking away, we're already, we're only looking at increasing forty-five thousand more a year commitment, right? But maybe we can do it for the, for two years. And in two years, we would pay that off and we, uh, do the, the, the other, you know, fifteen as an example. And, and that's where I think we can tackle this, because, uh, it, it, you know, and, and, I'm not in any way blaming anybody, but the, the fact of the matter is, we should have looked at this. Uh, I believe Sheriff Corrigan, if I'm wrong, that the last time we purchased radios were in oh, eight, okay, they were.
Oh, seven, oh, eight.
Oh, seven, oh, eight, so we, we should have start, we should have started taking bite out of the big elephant, you know, before. But we're here now, and, and then, uh, now we're blessed that, you know, we're taking care of, completely taking care of, but at least we're, uh, a- addressing the units, right, which is another big one, and down the line here. Uh, and, but, but I think it's too, too, too big of a expense to be able to do that all at once. Considering, I mean, we just, we, we just approved up a bunch of line items, having to do with getting into the capital fund. So I think that's where, where it probably makes sense.
So you brought up that fund, the sheriff's fund, finance we have with the, with the vehicles. And I know, and the reason I don't say this is because, uh, we had brought up to U F D S M at that time, that we would help them out with the vehicles, that we needed funding to repair our buildings. Because our buildings are a desire of repair all over the county. And we have talked about that, that we're gonna flip that around, that, so we had got that money to reconstruct all the building, you know, repair all the buildings. But then we run into a lot of hurdles with the engineering and like, and that, that when we decide it, then, uh, we're gonna let y'all have it to buy the units. And that's the only thing that I want you to keep in mind, is the buildings. That, that's all, that's what, that's what I'm saying, and everything you guys, because the buildings are a desire, and you know that.
Judge, I'd like to remind the court, uh, under the different options available for, um, the financing, um, the first payment isn't gonna be due till next fiscal year.
Right.
Uh, so that's not something we have to worry about right now, uh, as far as coming out of the capital funds, uh, current budget here.
So what, what month, what month are you talking about? The payment next year?
Uh, if we approve it today, then I, I would assume that I have to.
One year.
Yeah, one year from now, so that would be November, uh,
So it'll be the next year, so we just, fine. It'll be the, what I mean, that you guys can work it out during budget workshops, so where you get budget money to make that payment.
Right.
That, that's what I'm getting at.
That's where I alluded to the last payment, where the last payment is due now in this year.
No, for, for the last payment, but I mean, for the payment for the radio, right, the sheriff just mentioned.
Right.
And you guys can budget that money during the budget workshop, this probably need to serve summer.
Yeah.
And, uh, a part of the, the radio package, it's not just, uh, you know, we're including, uh, our constables, uh, the, the five constable offices and one of the deputies, uh, with these radios, the new portables, the new mobiles. Uh, of course, the console is a big thing, uh, as I've told you before, we're currently working off of a portable in, in our dispatch. And, uh, you know, huge issues there. Uh, I know we've got, uh, some of the folks from Motorola here today, uh, as well to answer any technical questions y'all may have, uh, about the systems.
Sheriff, how, how does that work with like the local fire department?
We're gonna have a separate channel for the fire departments, the, the Williston County Fire Departments, and, uh, they'll, they'll be able to contact our dispatch as well. You know, I know a lot of, I've spoke to a lot of those chiefs as well, and they are in dire need of communications equipment as well, mainly portals.
So Sheriff, it looks like, if I may here, on the quote, it looks like you're gonna be ordering two, two consoles?
Yes, sir.
One's a backup, or are you gonna run two or?
Uh, well, when we're having our, our, uh, Operation Stone Garden, uh, Border Star, when we have an extra dispatcher in there, they're able to, to tab them on that. And of course, if one console goes down, we've got that.
And you know, ironically, it doesn't look like the console price is that extreme, it's, we've seen sixteen thousand for the two.
Yes, sir.
Judge, um, my question just has to do with the fact that it's over fifty thousand dollars now, and under state procurement, we need lots of bids. So I don't know how we get around that, I mean, at this point, um, it's, it's definitely a quote, but, uh, it would be for this.
Does it have something to do with a buy for or anything, or?
How does that work?
Come, come on up.
Any other, my board?
Judge, Commissioners, uh, this is based on H G A C, Houston County Area Council, predetermined bid process, so that you can, uh, ride the coattails of that, for lack of a better word, so that you don't have to go back and do a whole procurement process.
Right.
You use their legal mechanism to do it again. I'll go further to say that probably eighty percent or so of Texas public safety entities buy on that contract for two reasons. First, it is the best price you can buy at from the product lines. And so all the fights are been done, all the negotiations have been done, so it's a very, it's twenty-seven percent off in most of the product. It really indeed, if you went to go buy it from a regular bid situation, it might be something higher than that, and plan on that further. The other thing that the contract very clearly says with H G A C is, anytime that Motorola sells product less than that, for more than ten percent of the value of all the contracts across the state, Motorola must reimburse H G A C and those users for that difference. So it's a rigid price, it's very, very clear and very, very good, and it's extensive, y'all, of course. Almost every entity in the valley uses this same process, or use H G A C or Texas D R, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's probably H G A C, even though they're the same price. And the second thing is that this police allowing for that one-year deferred payment for a payment to do is very helpful. Motorola Credit Corp. does that kinda like Ford Motor Credit. Uh, it is a large entity within that says, we wanna support getting these projects done for them. And we do that in such fashion that we defer that payment for a year, because you may not have a plan for what your real need is, but this gives you a chance to find your way to it, and so that's great.
So Judge, and I didn't see where that was specified in the contract, but I'm reading it, since it's coming in, since I just got it. Uh, maybe, uh, yesterday I had a chance to start looking at it. So I don't, I didn't see where, where there was an exemption to the, uh, that they were using, uh, in, that in there, is that in the contract?
It, oh, it is, it's H G A C contract, I'll, I'll make sure the numbers apply to it.
The invoice and the quotes and not the contract, and so maybe that's part of the question of not having, Judge, uh, is that I, I don't necessarily see the, the, maybe the entirety of it, of what.
On the, on the front page of each one of those quotes, it should be on the right-hand side, that fourth, fifth, sixth one out there, very, very top of the first page. And it lists specifically the contract number there.
Yeah, well, I, I'm, I'm still saying, without even having the numbers in front of me, is that, and, yeah, and it's good that we can obtain whatever we need now and pay a year later. The thing is that it formulated in there that it would go two years, I think it's five and then seven.
And we'll, we'll adjust it to, and I'll go further, say it could be like this. If next year were soft gear, and you knew it was gonna be, we'll adjust the contract to meet your needs with that potential.
And, and I appreciate that, but the numbers that we visited, uh, incorrect me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
Uh, and, and I don't recall what the total cost was, but the difference between paying upfront and paying cost, I think it's seven years, I think it was two or three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, you know, I'm sensitive to the need.
Sure.
Of the sheriff, but I'm also sensitive to the affordability. So that's what I'm hoping, that you look at what can we get with about roughly a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
I think we'll probably be just doing the dispatch, uh, the most important piece. Because there's some backroom electronics there in, in the dispatch unit itself, it all goes.
Yeah.
I'm saying, on, on an a hundred thousand payment, right? And so I'm saying the, if you did, uh, three years, for example, that would be double what you need to do. If you did seven years, that would be in line, and it would be one year deferred and plus seven years. And there's no penalty, if you all, all of a sudden were more capable, that more time, you can pay this thing off anytime you need it to. If you can manage it, there is no penalty for late payment, so you can recover for that also. Yeah.
That, that.
You know, we, we kinda shot at the magic number of a hundred thousand dollars with the seven-year one, and that would not be devastating. You double that when you go to the three-year term. There, there is no one that I know in the valley that does the three-year term, because it's the same situation. Nobody has just a potload of money to go spend.
Correct.
So you have to do it as best you can based on what your nature is. And we just, we just yield to y'all on that. We just, we just give the offerings so y'all can adjust. And again, if your next year's payment need to be half of, it need to be fifty thousand dollars. We would adjust the subsequent years to manage it like you need to manage it. And that's the beauty of having a Motorola Credit Corp. I can call that guy and get help.
So, so what you're suggesting is that there is, uh, a payment of a hundred thousand roughly, and acquire what's the sheriff is suggesting that he needs to acquire.
That is absolutely true.
And that is for the seven-year plan.
Yes, sir.
Which will be ultimately, it's too long, but it may be two or three hundred thousand more of the cost in the seven-year span.
I didn't measure the money like that, but it's such a, sure, it, it costs much, no doubt, it always costs much. And it's, it's under six percent in this particular light. Uh, there's a possibility on that day.
And, and so, okay, so realizing that there is, and, and I understand. It's like, man, a car, more views are.
Sure, absolutely.
So if we entertain the idea of cutting the amount, can we go with a hundred thousand or lesser years?
Absolutely.
What would that trigger?
Uh, we would just lose mobiles and portals, whichever one was more important. At this point, uh, those radios are no longer supported by medical service at all. For the most part, we can't get parts for most of them. What we do is we retire a unit when it dies. Occasionally, we'll have knobs or batteries that we can get, or spare antennas, but for the guts, for the real thing, the real part of the radio that might fail, not repairable. The majority of the product that they have, if they walked back in those years, that product series probably went away in their sales life in twenty twelve, around there, something like that. So we've made lots of good years out of it. We're proud of the product, it lasts a long, long, long time.
Right.
Twelve years.
So Judge, um, I don't, I don't believe that Williston County is, has been interlocal agreement with the H G A C. So we would have to first enter into an interlocal agreement with them, to have to submit them to a, I don't know, contact with, with, with them directly.
I'll, I'll help you with that.
But, uh, but that would have to, in order to be able to utilize that, and then that way you get around the procurement, um, you know, rules of Texas. But, uh, right now, we're, we're not, as far as I know, we're not members of the H G A C.
We'll check for you, my Sheriff, if you're not, we'll go off something like that, this is real news.
Yeah, it's, it's an interlocal agreement, Judge, it's basically, uh, you know, agreeing to work with.
So, Judge, and, uh, thank you, Senator. Heard quite a bit, I think we need to get into an interlocal, make a motion to, for, uh, the county attorney to, to review that H G, H G A C. A C interlocal or, or memorandum, or whatever it may be, so that we can continue forward. So I, I'll make a motion, we table this at this time, and take it up as soon as possible.
Right. And I have a motion, Commissioner, about A C A, and H G A second. Second, Commissioner, later, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. And all opposed, same sign, and she carries.
Judge, if you have any more questions? Is there any way to move to number forty-one? I'm sure you got it, is that it?
Okay, so, uh, yes, Commissioners, with your permission, we're gonna go, uh, to the statement, line item twenty-six. Remind me, we're going to line item number, uh, forty-one. Discuss considering select Boswell, L F Ford, as a vendor for ARCA project twenty-four eighty-nine. Nine vehicles updating equipment for the sheriff's office fleet to complete project implementation of the American Rescue Plan Act. Project funding administered by the US Department of Treasury, other federal estate agencies action required. Okay, so I understand the committee has, um,
The committee, which is Commissioner Gudina and, uh, Ms. Olivia, Sarah, I think she's got some information to present.
Yes, I do. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Just for the record, I do, I want to present, um, for ARCA project twenty-four eighty-nine, which is the Williston County Sheriff's Office's, uh, project for the nine patrol, uh, vehicles, I would like to present the, the, uh, schedule events, both for the delivery, right, and of course, um, the, the schedule events reflect the, the, the proposals, um, the dates that I want to cover with you that I think are very important for the outcome of the bid calculation. So the solicitation release date was scheduled on October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. The deadline for submittal for questions is October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four at four P M. And the deadline for Williston County to provide answers, it was on, uh, November the first, twenty twenty-four at four P M. The deadline to submit the bid was November fifth, twenty twenty-four at four P M. And the evaluation and calculation, uh, took place on November sixth, twenty twenty-four. Okay? And again, we have scheduled for today to be the working. We did receive, uh, two bid applications, one was from Boswell, L F Ford. And that application met all the minimum requirements of the United States Treasury according to guidelines. And it also came, um, within budget for the. And it also came, um, within budget for the total amount of six hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and five cents. We also received one other bid, reliable Chevrolet. Unfortunately, they did not meet the minimum requirements according to the United States, to the US Treasury federal guidelines. Therefore, that application was disqualified. So as you can see before you, the, what we handed out, which are only the recommended motions, uh, our sworn committee, as you all are aware, does consist of Commissioner Precinct Four, Armin Garcia, Commissioner Precinct One, Kelly Berduquera, and representing, uh, Commissioner, uh, or representing Precinct Two, uh, Road and Bridge as an institution of ours, which is a forming. And then we also had Ms. Didi, uh, Aras Mendes, who's our project manager of Groundworks, that is also to the list today. And then we did invite our county auditor's office, uh, but she was upset. She was not able to attend. So, um, I do believe, um, that the committee has made the recommendation. Uh, we did conduct the process with integrity, as always, according to local policy, state policy, and the United States Treasury guidelines. So the recommendation that you have before you is what's being presented today for this project.
Uh, make a motion to approve Boswell Elef as a selected vendor for project number twenty-four eighty-nine. Nine vehicles, outfitting equipment for Sheriff's Off, Office Fleet to be funded by Fund, by Fund one-one-four, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Motion by Commissioner Elef. Can I begin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teguena. Any more discussion?
I just, uh, wanted to thank, uh, Groundworks for reviewing all the documents for us, because this is our second go-around in this. But, uh, I, I think we're pretty confident.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, it's here. Sign if I say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Judge.
Line item number forty-two, discussion to approve the purchase. Oh, yeah, same thing. Nine vehicles, uplifting equipment and Sheriff's Office fleet, ARPA project twenty-four eighty-nine for the total amount of six thousand two hundred, two hundred, uh, six thousand twenty-five, seven eighty-seven and five cents to be paid by Fund one-fourteen, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA action required.
Judge, it's six hundred twenty-five thousand.
Six hundred, what did I say?
Six thousand.
Gee. Six hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven eighty-seven and five cents. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Who's your group?
Yes, I'm on, and to, you gotta read the.
Here you go.
I'll go ahead and read.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of upper project number two-four-eight-nine, forty-nine vehicles, outfitting equipment for Sheriff's Office fleet for the total amount of six hundred twenty-five thousand, seven eighty-seven and five cents to be paid by Fund one-one-four, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Thank you.
And a motion and a second by Commissioner Garcia.
Just real quick, the other guy, I mean, I think, I think Chief, Chief is there? No, I'm just gonna, I think, uh, I've been a former law force officer. I'm, I'm glad to see we're bringing you all nine brand-new vehicles. I just hope they heard and hit you, because I know, I know we have some issues. And these are completely outfitted. They should have the cages, the security cages. They should have everything in them, radio holders, everything. All paid from the Rescue Plan.
And decals.
And decals.
And decals.
That was the thing. Uh, if, if anything comes up, let us know. But, uh, the, the main thing is, in my opinion, it actually came in under budget. Uh, she missed him out. So that's good.
Judge, shall I be excused?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you for, for attention. I have a, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, it's here. Sign if I say aye. And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so that's it. We go back to twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yes.
All right, so we go back to twenty-six. Discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, action to approve Rose Bridge Precinct two to purchase one, uh, twenty-four Ford F-15 XL group cap four-by-four bin number one F T F W one L five-three R K E three-one-zero-zero-four with the common full trade-in, twenty fifteen Chevrolet, uh, four-door bin number one G C V K T E C six F Z three-one-three-two-seven-seven and two zero one four Ford, four-door bin number one F T F W one C F six E K E two-five-four-five-seven. Action required.
Yes, sir, to put that on the agenda, trying to upgrade a vehicle that we use from, uh, Foreman. Those are two vehicles, uh, one was a hand-me-down that we used for many years. I think it was actually, uh, Commissioner Garcia, when he was at the Sheriff's Department.
Control truck, yeah.
Shouldn't mean tip-top.
Yeah.
No.
It was.
And, yeah, that's why I put them in there. We need, we need them upgraded. We put a lot of repairs in them. And it's, uh, I've cut them up, too.
They actually gave good trading, though, too.
Yeah, they did.
I'm, I'm moving to approve that, dear. Did you take the one?
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia and a second by Commissioner. Is that a pass? Any more discussion? All in favor, it's here. Sign if I say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, Mr. Garcia. We took twenty-seven out of order, uh, already.
Discussion, action to approve purchase and installation of parking light, lights to be paid after the capital fund action required. Commissioners, what this is, is that this is a parking light right outside. And what happened was the initial intention was to utilize the existing poles. And it's included in the contract where this company would, in essence, uh, be able to install them. However, during the process, what we discovered was that these poles are actually black poles that we utilized. Furthermore, is the structure in the bottom has eroded and it was not recommended by two electricians to re, to replace them. So what we did is we, uh, went out and, and, uh, got the, the, the two poles. And on, on one of them, all it is, is that the company is still gonna do, and did, the bottom portion where the poles are gonna sit. And then the, the electrician, uh, invoices for the pole itself, the lights, and the installation. So what I'm asking is that we, uh, approve, uh, paying the invoice for the electrician and for the poles themselves. And I think that it's, uh, it's a good price, uh. And as you can see, the, the parking light turned out to be, uh, a little bit beautiful as far as, but I'm biased. I have to.
So it's not the insta, I'm just sorry, just, it's not for the installation? It's for, to pay the electrician?
It's, it's to pay the electrician to install.
To install.
And, and.
Replace.
And to purchase the.
Replace the.
It's labor and supply.
Right, for, uh, for a total of six thousand two ninety-one. I think it, I think it was.
I'm moving to approve that.
Again.
Six thousand, oh, that is good.
It is. I have a motion by Commissioner Teguena, second by Commissioner Garcia, and the other, just so you all know, uh, they're electric, right? And he's gonna tap into the building, uh, trench and.
That's the.
Yeah. So I have a, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number twenty-nine, discussion to accept grant award from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts for the Rural Law Enforcement Salary Assistant Program Award, one eight zero 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 one zero four six for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Judge, this is the one for the Sheriff's Office, uh.
Zero one five six?
It ends in zero, zero five six.
Yeah, oh, zero.
You said four, sir.
Yeah. One zero five six.
This is the one for the, uh, supplementing of, uh, salary portions for the Sheriff's Office, uh, jailers and deputies.
Oh, yes, yes. Right, on that, uh, it has been, yeah, it has been taken care of. We're, we're in line. We're in line, Commissioner.
You, uh, you applied for it and you've already gotten the contract back to, so this is to accept the award. I didn't know what stage you were at.
Yes. So can I entertain a motion to?
I'm moving to approve it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teguena. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, it's here. Sign if I say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I have a third discussion. Action to allow Road and Bridge Precinct to purchase and finance a twenty-twenty motor grader, one zero four zero one G C A W D, serial number W nine five zero zero three zero one. Action required.
Judge, I have this on here right now because I am looking at you purchasing or financing a, uh, motor grader, twenty-twenty motor grader, so one forty cat. I'm currently having a lot of issues with, uh, one I have right now. Only have one unit. Uh, previously it was down for three weeks. Cost us about twenty thousand dollars in repairs. Uh, and it's al, it's an ongoing thing. I have to put it back in the shop right now. Uh, I looked at it, um, you know, I found a, uh, motor grader cat with, uh, with, like I said, it's a one forty G C with fifteen hundred dollars, twenty-twenty model. And, uh, I mean, it has everything from backup cameras to, um, you know, lights, tow, tow, uh, tow bars to ripper. I mean, it's, it's, it's fully loaded, uh, it's fully bumper-to-bumper warranty, um, on it. And, um, you know, the, the price on it right now is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And I've been working with Carmen, uh, on the different finance options. One, one scenario is where we make a down payment and then have annual payments, uh, up, up to four, five years, if I'm not mistaken. The next scenario is just to go ahead and pay, pay it out of my own budget. So, but right now I'm just looking for an approval to be able to continue to negotiate and, and work the price on the, on the motor grader. And if I do get it where I need it to, to do, then work with my new car to get it all sorted out.
All right, does, does, a purchase like this have to go through two or three bids also?
Good question.
Buy board or?
It, it is on the buy board, so, um, we're, we're fully covered on that part. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's coming out of our, our, it's not coming out of capital fund. Coming out of the, the, kind of, pre- three road and bridge budget.
Okay, so, so moving to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teguena. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, it's here. Sign if I say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Line item thirty-one, discussion to reclass two hundred and forty-three dollars and six cents from Fund seventeen. Utilize the Veterans Assistance Fund, one thirty-five. Action required. Good morning. Is it still morning?
Yeah, I don't know. It's been early. So this two hundred and forty-three dollars was from a payment from last grant year. The only payment that was not covered by the grant. So I've been working with, uh, Carmen, because we do have a separate line that we can cover that, those funds. So that's why we're here today. We need to reclass those funds.
They suggested to use their, uh, Veterans Assistance Donation Fund, and that's what was missing. I apologize. I didn't get back to them. But, um, it's their donation fund, which, um, they stated they receive funding to assist the veterans. And this is a veterans type of, um, expense that they had. They're just requesting the court permission to allow it to be.
All right, so will we be okay with?
Well, as far as, you know, coming and requesting information for permission, yes, um.
No, but in your book on the.
Oh, yeah, that would, that would take care of that grant expense that's not allowed and needed to be moved down, so.
So, will we need this motion to plead or?
Yes, we can stay in the motion.
I'd like to say that this, this is separate from, it's not my budget. It's different.
Right, it's their donation account, which, um, they have come to court, right, to, uh, accept the funding of donations. And, um, they stated to me that it's for the use of the veterans. So this is an expense that would go into the utilities line item, but under their donation account. So y'all can, if y'all are, um, in agreement, um, you would reclass the two hun, two hundred and forty-three dollars and six cents from the grant Fund seventeen to, uh, Fund one thirty-five utilities account.
So what Commissioner's asking is, but we're in line with the books.
Yeah, that's what we need to take care of, um, the books.
But I, I would follow utilities.
So move.
Was it, yeah, because it came from that one.
It wasn't expensive, so.
Yes.
You made a motion to what?
Repeat.
Marie Conwy.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to what Marie Conwy said. Motion, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teguena.
Thank you, Judge.
We do it?
Thank you.
So, uh, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Line item thirty-two, discussion to approve the use of Sebastian Community Center December twelfth night of over Christmas community event. I think Commissioner, this is.
Yeah, we didn't, uh, didn't make the title, the, the type here, but yes, this is a request from, uh, from our precinct, uh, to have a community, a community involvement event, uh, on the twelfth, which luckily doesn't conflict with the Sheriff's Office. But they're gonna, they're gonna be able to benefit from this, um, actually, uh, this is appropriate now, but it, it was a suggestion from my, from my wife, who is very involved with the community. And we're gonna, we're gonna have an update first of the project that's going on in Sebastian. Secondly, we're gonna have a tree lighting, uh, a first annual tree lighting there, uh, in, uh, in Sebastian. And, and a lot of community members are already involved. And, uh, we're also trying to get some, some, maybe some carers and some other, Coach, you said, some, it's so close to Christmas. So anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna have that. And there, there's, there won't be any, if there's any donations, I'll, I'll, I'll get the form that Miss Unhorsed has. I don't think we're gonna have any, you know, take care of that.
And I'm just wondering, uh, I know I picked it last year, and if one of our precincts has a, a portable light tower, we could use it in the parking, because it is pretty dark. There's no kind of lighting in the.
Somebody hasn't? They, they, they actually, they, they actually, uh, in, 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 uh, the building, they, they fixed all the exterior lighting. So it lights up pretty good.
Parking's pretty dark.
Yeah, well, they, Lifeford, I S D fixed the Matita Lasso lighting, or at least it was during Halloween. So it actually.
We can just follow up to make sure they can.
Yes, because if not, it does get dark. If, if you're in need, give me a call. We got, we got you. Nice.
All right, so we just need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I'll make the motion. And what you like, Commissioner Teguena?
Second.
And second by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Line item thirty-three, discussion, action, budget, amount of request, what is economic pitching for the transfer fifty thousand from line item six four four zero zero four two zero road improvements to sixty-four four zero zero three eight five machinery and equipment. Action required.
Judge and Commissioners, this is a, a purchase that I've actually had in planning. It was, uh, Ms. Carmen's aware of it. It was, it's a, it's an extended arm, uh, blue mower that, uh, that, it's a three-point hitch version that goes on a tractor. That I've had, actually, I had it on order since July. It's, uh, the last of July. And, um, I'm having to, to transfer some money over to machinery and equipment over, over, over five hundred, the fifty thousand. Comes just under, but we also have, uh, the, uh, the different quotes, uh, for the different, different version, uh, uh, different brands, I'm sorry, of this particular piece of equipment. I felt like this was the best, uh, the best suited for what we need to do. And it's to clean out these ditches and these, uh, retention ponds whenever we get, whenever we get a release. It should reach about sixteen feet. So I'm looking forward to that. Since it didn't arrive prior to last year's budget, uh, I have to reapply for the, for the fill.
Moving to approve.
Second, by Commissioner Garcia. Garcia. Any, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Line item thirty-four, discussion to accept grant over there through the body worn camera grant program fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Grant five zero five three one oh one. Action required. We have Mr. Rolles. We have Mr. Rolles.
Commissioners, Judge, uh, we thankfully were, y'all authorized to apply to this grant, we're grateful to have been awarded. One thing is this match, this grant is a matching grant. So the match for this grant, for the cameras and the equipment necessary to operate and maintain them. Is eleven thousand. Eleven thousand one thirty two sixty seven cents, that would be for, for our body cams.
How many we getting?
Eleven.
Eleven?
And we still gotta pay a thousand dollars each? And that's, how much was the grant?
The grant, we were awarded twenty five thousand one thirty, total was thirty six thousand two seventy, thirty two cents.
Is it a seventy twenty, or seventy thirty, or eighty twenty, about half?
I don't see much, twenty five percent.
Seventy five, hundred and fifty.
So uh. And this for all the software, is it automatically downloaded, do you all have to connect or?
Uh, I'm sorry, it'll be downloaded there, so with all the, all the equipment necessary to download, uh, all the racks necessary for the, for recharging and, and everything of those, those body cams.
This, what, what are you gonna do with, with the cameras you have, were any of them usable or?
Yes, some are, some are still under warranty, and we're gonna be sending back, but um, some are completely. Cause of the weather, cause of the, the, the activities, you know, uh, either they're in a struggle or whether it's hot, you know, some are completely unusable.
Did each uh, each officer, does it sign a particular one, or they like, are they shared?
No, they're assigned one, everybody has one.
Oh, just to follow, uh, does this grant include the storage for the downloads of the videos? I know that that's been an issue kind of, uh, in some of the conferences that I go to, that they run out of a storage space uh for them, so what, do you, does that include?
No, not, not cloud, no.
So do y'all have the capability to not have an issue with the storage?
Yes.
With what you currently have?
Yes.
There's not like a anticipated future, like expense for.
For power, sure, no.
What type of warranty are they gonna have?
It's a warranty warranty for any kind of uh, either like um. The actual uh, construction of the camera to any kind of, let's say there's a technical issue, you know, with uh, how it operates and how it downloads and that, that'll be covered. Also on premises, uh, it's the activation rate as well, it'll, it'll be there in the upside.
It's a name brand that.
Yes, model.
No, model, the record carrier.
Well, uh.
Can we add it to the front?
Make a, make a motion to approve, to accept. Make a, uh, motion to accept, fund the work.
This isn't budgeted, so that would be something that I do need to review, because y'all just approved a lot of the sheriff's uh information. So, a lot of expenses and some are for last year, so I do wanna have to make sure. Well, I mean, y'all, y'all can um do as, you may, I just wanna provide you the numbers for the capital, because. Y'all are tapping into the matching grants, and I know last meeting, I think there was another project that, because it was over budgeted. Requested a match of about twenty thousand, so that wasn't budgeted either, so um. I just wanna make y'all aware that if y'all wanna make a decision now, uh, it's contingent on what, you know, what funding there is available. Because at the moment, this wasn't budgeted, just like the other items, line items that weren't.
Let me just be clear on this. So the, the line item is to accept, as you know, what we have put in place. Uh, I guess unofficially, is for us to approve them applying, and then for them to come back to accept. When you presented to us to apply, was it clear that it was a matching?
Yes, sir.
And when figures were thrown out?
Yes, sir.
So.
It just wasn't included as part of the budget process from coming back saying what, what each department needed, that just wasn't. Did the matching out, probably wasn't talked about. To be included in, in, in the budget.
Yeah, I didn't, cause usually you come back and then you ask if you're an accepted or not. Um, and the ones that we do include are usually the ones that we have like renewals for, but this grant was a hundred percent, if I'm not mistaken, right? That was before?
Um, it used to be.
Yeah, it used to be, it just changed, so, I mean, at that point, and. I don't recall having, uh, usually we don't discuss match until you accept the award, from where it's coming from.
Judge, what you could do is, uh.
I, I think maybe we need to change that, because then it'll be counterproductive.
Right.
All this time he spent, you know, applying and then us, and then he's saying we don't have the time to match. And then he needs to be matching to uh. Consider where it's coming from, if they do get it.
So at the point of application, you need for them to tell us uh where the match is from, coming from, and the court, when the court accepts. Apply, and, and I did wanna remind you, I think we didn't do it that way because, what if they don't get awarded, but you still want me to include it in the budget?
Well, just to me, because of what I'm saying, is that to me it's counterproductive. In other words, if, if, if we don't have the match, why even apply? Or, if we tell them applying, and then when they come back, we don't have the matches, all this time and effort.
Then what time did we get the quote, as to how much it was gonna be? This is the whole.
Maybe that's the issue.
The last, when, when this became available, when the player announcement was made.
He said it was gonna be for that.
Yes, so now, we just now were awarded.
So we'll know, because you're awarding so much, and then you're gonna, I guess, is it based on the quote, right, or?
Yes.
Judge, and is this something that you all would consider, is that you could uh take action to authorize the county judge to accept the, 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 the grant? Uh, after you conferred with, with obviously auditor, so that way, because. There's, and I just say this from experience, there's usually a thirty day window to accept the award. And if you, if you don't accept it, we can not, I think they sometimes give you like an extra ten days or so. But there's usually a window, I think it's forty five days max, but if you don't accept it, then they take it back. So uh, I don't know if that's something that you all, I don't know what the deadline is on this one, but uh. That could be something that you all could, could do as well as to authorize the county judge to, to accept, cause you have to, the county judge would have to certify. Anyway, through the grant system, uh, where you, you could authorize the county judge to accept it. Obviously after conferring, if there's any concerns on, on where this, uh, the money should go to. Uh, and then obviously, Judge, we would have to come back next uh time to do a budget amendment, to be able to. Figure out, if you, if you choose to accept it, to figure out where that would happen, cause that's kind of, I think that would have to all happen simultaneously to. You can certify, but then you have to figure out where, where it's gonna come from, and then do the amendment.
Right.
Which was about that.
So we could take contingent, you know, approving the match from capital contingent on, uh, on the funding and allow the judge.
Correct it, and then that way you could, you could, uh, I mean, obviously.
Can I entertain a motion?
I have.
Oh, Judge, there is a motion on the floor.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Commissioner LaFara.
Oh, it is, like.
It was just to, to approve. To approve, I, I was just as, asking, in the fourth, there was a second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner LaFara.
Could you, could he amend the motion though, Judge? To authorize the county judge?
To authorize the county judge to.
Accept and certify.
Accept and certify the uh.
Body worn camera grant program number five oh five three one oh one.
The uh, accept the uh, body worn camera grant program uh for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Uh, five zero five three one zero one. After discussion. After discussion with the, with the honor, with the audit.
I have a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, is that ready?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? All in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries, line number thirty five. Discussion next to accept funds awarded through the local border security grant program twenty twenty five. Operation Border Store Grant number forty four ninety two nine oh three, action required.
This, this is a continuation grant that we were working, we would, uh, like it to be re- awarded the same amount.
Much?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Though they use for fuel and, and for overtime. And no match.
Alright. I have a motion by Commissioner Tejelina to approve. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Basiana, any more discussion? All in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries, line number thirty six, discussion. Thank you, uh, you don't have any other?
Well, this, money, after all the money was spent, the sheriff's office, can we be advised to your party?
There you go, again, sir.
Line item thirty, thirty six, discussion, discussion and other decisions for a district attorney to request and assess donations from local businesses. And vendors to be used various community outreach events for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, action required.
Judge, uh, I'm just gonna talk around here, I don't wanna call. Uh, so throughout the year, we have different events that my office participates in, I mean, this is, and uh. It's, we have a lot of, you know, community people that want to give donations, and so what, uh. What we're gonna be doing is keeping track of what, they're not monetary donations, so it's like usually, um. If we're having a little function after hours, somebody might offer to say, a case of water, or, oh, we'll bring some sandwiches, or we'll donate this or that. And so what, uh, it would be to offer, to allow us to be able to accept those donations and occasionally request them, especially if it's a really big event. Uh, we have a big event in um, January for human trafficking, and rather than do them for individual events, this would be for the whole fiscal year. And then we would submit a report to the court on which vendors, uh, to make what donations. Again, non-monetary would all be kind of a, uh, I'm saying like a, sometimes it's an in-kind where they're gonna uh offer to. Uh, print some flyers for us or something, to that effect, so it's not always just like food, sometimes it's other services as well. But in, so that way, then we would submit it after the event, uh, to approve the donations that we accepted.
So who to approve?
Second. By Commissioner LaFara, second by Commissioner Tejelina, any more discussion? All in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Line number thirty seven, discussion to approve addendum to intra-local cooperation. Agreement with the County of Idaho, Texas and Widdes, and County of Widdes, Texas, approved on ten eighteen twenty twenty two for Widdes County Jail Food Services, possible action required.
So Judge, that should have, I think it was my, uh, when I typed it up, I took what addendum, that that should, should actually be an amendment, you have that before you? This was part of the agreement that was approved on October the eighteenth of twenty twenty two. That Idaho County would provide the meals, the meal, the meal services for the Widdes County Jail, once it was fully operational. Uh, we've met, uh, Idaho County also is uh meeting today to approve the same type of amendment. So then we can uh have a more comprehensive agreement, uh, the, the contract is before you, I did review it, in fact, I sent most, a lot, quite a bit of the. Uh, quite a bit of the, of the, uh, uh, amen, amendment is, uh, is, is in there. And so, uh. It would be, as uh, Judge, you know, and I'm not sure if the other commissioners know, but it would be at uh, the cost for Idaho County, so there's no extra. Idaho County's not making money off of us, we're not losing money, it would be to provide that service at the cost that Idaho County is, uh, is incurring, uh, through their, uh, their party vendor.
Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Who will to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejelina. Can I, um, entertain a second? Second, second by Commissioner LaFara. And Commissioners, as you know, we're eager to have these uh foods prepared here locally, if anything, just that trip is killing. Uh, so, any more discussion? All in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries, line number thirty eight, discussion approved memorandum of understanding between the Lyford C I D and Widdes County District Attorney's Office. Action required.
Uh, Judge, this is our, the law practicum class for the Lyford School District, uh, uh, Officer, uh, Lupita Lina is the one who, who oversees that. Uh, we've been doing this for a couple of years, and so it's a renewal, uh, where they come in, uh, attempt to observe, participate in the system. And, and, uh, their class comes in and learns what the criminal justice system is about in our DA's office.
So who will to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejelina. Um, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaFara, any more discussion? All in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries, uh, let me see, let me just, Ms. Vasquez, are you on?
Yes, I am, good morning.
Yes. Uh, well, we went through your line item, uh, and thank you for, for calling in, uh, Commissioners.
Oh, thank you for, for taking my call, I have a small family with me this morning, and um, was, didn't have ability to call in, but I just arrived to the office and I thought I would. Check in to see if you were still available, so I could help, be helpful.
Yes, and, and, no, and, and, and so, uh, we approved the, uh, two dollars and twenty five cents. Uh, uh, what's it called, backwards, forward, or something like that?
Okay, the past and future, yes, sir.
Past and future, as we did.
Yes, sir.
In two thousand and seven or eight.
Yes, sir, in your history, that's correct, okay, so that's two twenty five, past and future, which means your required rate. That you've approved would be seven point seven five, do you wish to keep your elected rate of eight point zero nine, sir?
Y- yes, we, we decided to, to, to keep it. And, and, and I know I'm going into a line that we've already discussed, but uh, I'm glad you brought up the rate, cause that was, that was one of the questions that came up, and I had it. Uh, in, in front of me, so uh, thank you for that. Uh, and I, I think that, that's, that's all that, that we needed, if we never run the line.
No, we're good.
Thank you, so we're good, tha- thank you so much.
You're welcome, I, you're, I'm looking at the plan now, and you're still, even with that decision, you're still a hundred and one point five percent funded. You, that means you're still a little overfunded, which leaves you in an excellent position. If you keep paying that elected rate, eight point zero nine, which you've mentioned, then, then that will be, be your rate for January, it doesn't change. Even though the required goes up a little bit to seven point seven five, uh, but it will stay at eight point eight nine if you keep that in place. But it looks great, and what we'll do is I'll draft the paperwork for your signature, Judge, it'll require your printed name, your signature, the date of today's meeting. And I will get that prepared today, and then once you sign it and get back to us, we will send you a confirmation email acknowledging the plan change. And then we will reiterate that it begins January of twenty twenty five, and is past and future, so it will go all the way to the beginning. So there won't be a two hundred percent match anymore, that two twenty five overrides it, so now the match is at two dollars and twenty five cents, all the way back to the beginning. Now, it doesn't affect retirees, those people are already getting their money, not the retirees, it only affects the active employee.
Alright, thank you so much.
So, thank you, you're welcome so much, thank you for, for allowing me to call in, and I will prepare this for you immediately and send it over.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a wonderful one.
You too. Okay, so we go to line item, I apologize, you know. Uh, line number thirty nine, discussion action to accept the, uh, local border security program grant D A, uh, L B S grant number two ninety nine five seven zero nine. In the amount of fifteen thousand effective nine one of twenty twenty four through eight thirty one of twenty twenty five, action required.
Judge, and I've started including D A about my grants, because the sheriff's office and the constable's office and my office have similar grants, so that way we can keep track of which ones, which. Uh, this is a recurring grant, uh, they've increased our amount from ten thousand to fifteen thousand, but that's an overtime grant for my, uh, investigators.
Alright, so.
There's no match.
Motion to approve, Judge, I have a motion by Commissioners LaFara.
Second.
Second by Commissioners Tejelina, any more discussion? All in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries, line number forty, discussion action to approve open enrollment for T A C K S, which is tax. Uh, cybersecurity training for Widdes County, so at a contract five per, probably quite a lot of per, probably the expense accounts to be discussed. And what I'm told, uh, the note that I got from Cassie is that, uh, that is budgeted under the administration, under contracts and legal.
Yes.
Right, so it's already been budgeted.
It's a renewal, Judge, last year, and I'll pay the same, I don't know, personally.
Who will to approve, Judge?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejelina. Second, second by Commissioner LaFara, any more discussions? All in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries, line number forty three. Uh, presentation by, uh, work completed in the general office, coastal management class, E M P, cycle twenty six project. Water engineering and design for Fredstone Park, contract number twenty two zero four five zero one five D one one two. And presentation on eligible expenses and past commitment, uh, five hundred twenty eight thousand nine oh five for cycle twenty nine. Commissioner, before we, uh, before I let, uh, Jessica, uh, explain, let me just, uh, assure you, because if you're like me. When we see the big figures, we, we wanna be sure that we have a comfort level, and so. As you recall, the five twenty nine zero nine, uh, five twenty nine nine oh five, uh, are committed, uh, coming from the county, however. Uh, those particular. However, uh, those particular funding to come from the, um, GOMISA. And, and so, uh, uh, this is just reaffirming that that can be what we have committed. So I, I'll let you, Jessica, explain.
Yes, I am mindful of, of your time with this long agenda, so I, I apologize, but this was just provided to me this, this morning. So may I approach the bench?
Sure, sure.
This is just, I think it's gonna help us, um, review this, um. Okay, um, as you mentioned, Judge, this is, uh, um, cycle twenty-six, so historically, it seems like you've been with, on this project for a while now. Um, so the funding that we had, I just want to, um, a kind reminder that under cycle twenty-six, uh, C N P from the funding agency was the Texas General Land Office, um, you had covered the, the final stage in design of plans for the following items. I think it's very important that, uh, also the, we, that I mentioned that including alternate design specifications of materials because that plan had to be redone. Uh, so that covered the demolishing of the existing restroom facilities or facility. Construct a new restroom facility, remove miscellaneous, uh, concrete, remove also concrete parking area. The installation of a new parking area, uh, materials either asphalt or concrete as an alternate. Also to install concrete sidewalk or trail, install lining and install trash receptacles. Um, as we know that the final estimates for construction provided by Mark McDonald, right? Uh, are seven hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars for base bid of elements listed above. So that's what, uh, cycle twenty-six covered. Now, we are going to, the grant is gonna be, uh, cycle twenty-nine, okay? So again, we had been selected for cycle twenty-eight, but because the property was taken longer, uh, now we fall under cycle twenty-nine. Cycle twenty-nine is to cover bidding and construction of elements designed in cycle twenty-six. It will also require procuring a new engineer to oversee the bidding and construction, so we will have to, uh, procure a new engineer. Um, also, Grantworks was already previously procured to administrate and manage for cycle twenty-nine back in twenty twenty-two. And, uh, we will be finalizing the contract and signing it to county in the next, uh, this is a note from Sherry, so that is still under revision. Um, G O Lo's, uh, the, for the funding year, it is, like Judge mentioned, GOMISA funding as well, okay? Not only are you gonna match with, uh, the local match with GOMISA funding, at the state level, the cycle twenty-nine is also covered under GOMISA. So only a portion of the elements in this final plans are eligible for GOMISA expenses, and this is on the state level. And those eligible expenses have been listed in the grant agreement and work plan, which is what Mrs. Inoza also had the opportunity to revise. I think most importantly, again, be mindful of your time, you know that at any time you have any questions or concerns, uh, you can definitely visit with me in the office and/or Miss Asherdy Remma. That's gonna be the assigned project manager by Grantworks. But I think very importantly, if you look at the cycle twenty-nine budget, it's been broken down to you in the second sheet, it's color-coded. If you look at the, the, the budget that is listed under the peach orange color, that's what we're gonna cover with local funds. If you look at those highlighted in green, that is what would be covered and what is eligible under grant fundings. So at this time, cycle twenty-nine application, estimates for the project in hand is eight hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred five dollars. Uh, for the seven hundred forty-nine, seven hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-two are for the construction of ADA facility with rent station, roadway improvements, parking lot with ADA parking spaces, ADA compliant walking trail. And that's what covers that cost under the one hundred nine thousand four hundred seventy-three. This is for professional services and admin, which includes admin and engineering. And then five thousand dollars definitely for signage, 'cause that's a big requirement for the development, for the development and installation of the signage. Of the estimated project costs, uh, Commissioners and Judge, a total will be three hundred thirty-five thousand in GOMISA grant funds. That's how much we were awarded, three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars even. And again, the local funds that, um, I think maybe what, a year or two ago, um, I presented before you and it was approved for five hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars, that's what this court committed. Um, if you look at the third, the second bullet, uh, there that we noted, currently total project costs are estimated again at eight hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars to accommodate the final design estimates. The grant fund remains the same, three hundred thirty-five thousand, and again, local funding, five hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars. And as you are very much aware, that, um, this may change, it just all depends when we, um, procure and open the bid. Um, I think most importantly, that we are very clear is that with the meetings that we had with, um, Judge and Commissioner Tejera included, right? Set basers preceding, was, what was the priority, um, item, Judge? And you mentioned the restroom facilities, and that's the update that I do want to mention today, as Ms. Wimpy has also noted, is that the actual construction of the restroom will be captured with local funding, not with grant funding. Okay? And that is, if you go down below, I believe, um, let me see where it's, restroom facilities, okay? There says we, we noted it, local funds, and that's for two hundred thousand dollars. That's what's been budgeted, so that when we go out for bids, that's what we're gonna.
Just to clarify, um, it says, uh, three hundred thirty-five thousand in GOMISA grant fund.
Yes, sir.
And five sixty-one in local funds. The three thirty-five GOMISA grant is due?
It's from the Texas General Land Office, yes.
Okay, so I wanna make sure that, that you all understand that, 'cause I have heard in, that where it says three hundred thirty-five thousand GOMISA grant fund, that's from G O Lo.
Yes.
That's not our GOMISA funds.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I can figure.
Well, yeah.
And, and the five sixty-one?
It's from our GOMISA.
It's from our GOMISA, so there's.
So keep in mind, yeah, so keep in mind that we, um, are highly recommended to manage GOMISA funding as one of your most stringent federal fund. So it comes from the interior, then it's down to the state level. At the state level, the Texas General and Land Office manages the GOMISA funding at the state level. And then we're allocated at the local level. So it is an allowable expense as far as an allowable match. We are able to match with GOMISA funds. And so that is what the court had approved. Uh, I apologize, I don't have that exact date with me here today, but.
Can we approve that, I think?
Yes, sir.
So, so those GOMISA funds are, are targeted or specific and this falls in there?
Yes.
And is there enough funds to cover that?
There is, sir, at, there, there are, and we're very mindful, and again, Ms. Harman's here every year, and so does Mr. Cavazos. He is really good about notifying us when those funds are, are deposited. And, um, at this time, Judge is also aware that there is enough funds to cover. Hopefully, we will cover a bit.
Thought it was gonna come on our mention.
Yeah, okay.
So Judge, let's see, I'll look highlighted, uh, the very first one, demolition, removing the existing restroom facilities and all that. How, how, how do they come up with that number?
Which ones, sir?
Okay.
The very first, very first ones, like demolition, remove existing restroom facility.
This is.
And they come up with a unit price.
This is, uh, Mark McDonald, uh, they were the ones that selected the engineers for the design. And so they do their research, um, they're not here today, obviously. But that is something that we had already, uh, discussed that in-kind could also cover.
That's what I'm wondering, because.
And we can.
The thing about.
We can get a local and, and ourselves to go out there and invent something.
The thing is.
Right, but.
It's gotta be a thing for approved to make sure that we can do in-kind services.
Yeah.
And we can, it has been approved, but that is something that the.
We, we've talked about it.
The leadership could discuss, and this is under a project of special merit. Please keep in mind that initially, it was a coastal management program. Now it's a project of special merit, so we have a little bit more time. But most importantly, they wanna see, uh, keep our eye on the ball, on the, on the grant-funded items. Those are the ones that we need to, you know, make sure that we, um, deliver, the deliverables are there according to the timeline. The local, that's what we could further discuss, maybe in a workshop, or, um, we could present here as to, um, if you do want to cover some of that with in-kind, you know, which meant, would mean your machinery, your equipment, your personnel. Um, we could definitely use that, I would agree.
Okay.
If you have any, uh, different questions, I've provided those recommended motions.
Just, and I apologize for this question, it's, uh, this is all pre-construction, we haven't selected anybody to.
No, sir, we still need to procure, um, an engineer and then also then later go for construction.
So we do it now, which is really mad.
This is really to approve the contract because we have to, according to the timeline, we have to kick off in December. So that's why it's so important that we present this to you before today, to approve the contract between Weydysy County and the Texas General Land Office.
So we use the motion, that's it?
I provided a recommended motion to.
Okay, get rid of the motion, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve Texas General Land Office GOMISA contract agreement number twenty-four dash zero nine nine dash zero one zero E five four six, C N P project of special merit for the total amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second. I'm watching by Commissioner Tejera, second by Commissioner La Paz, any more discussion?
Just real quick, uh, sorry, I walked too late. The, uh, the current, uh, the Port Mansfield, what, what is it, the Navigation District? Are they, and where do we have to contact them about any of this?
Initially, um, Commissioner Garcia, initially, when we first were awarded, I did present to the Navigation District. Uh, again, we're looking at cycle twenty-six, probably two, three years ago. Um, the new design, the new plan has not been presented to the Navigation.
I'll, I'll just recommend reaching out to them.
Sure.
Yeah, there, there is their return line for their, uh.
There you go.
Main water line is gonna be right there, right? I know because we, we hit it, we were doing some work out there and we hit it until Navigation Crew came out and they pointed out that there's a main line, it goes right through our property there.
Definitely, just like when Tex Stop presented Chihuahua, right? And you identified it, that's also so.
But I, I'll make sure I'll get with Frank and them.
I think for the most, informally, informally, they're aware, but if, uh, there is a, if this court, uh, is advising for us to make a formal presentation.
Just letting them know, uh, because they're giving us a construction water line and stuff.
Is there with any markers?
Yes.
Alright, so I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All your favorites, you can say no.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line number forty-five, request permission to install a new three-quarter inch meter service line tied into a four-inch water line location of, uh, proposed board crossing approximately seventy, uh, seventy feet south of southwest corner of Highway one eighty-six and County Road twenty-five, Violet, Violet, Vito Net, sorry. Vito Net, so, sorry, Eddie. Vito Net Road will bore west to east, four feet deep, uh, right away, forty feet, precinct one, action required.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Garrett's already aware of it and already have the approval, or review approval from AC Engineering.
Who will to approve this?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejera, second by.
Second.
Second by, sorry. Uh, I'll give the second by. Okay, so I have a second by Commissioner Garcia. Uh, any more discussion? All your favorites, you can say no.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number, uh, forty-six, request permission, uh, to install a new three-quarter inch meter service line location for the board crossing approximately thirty-two ninety feet east from southeast corner of F M seventy-sixty-one and Red Eye Ranch Road thirty-two hundred, County Road thirty-two hundred west will bore south to north, five feet deep, connect service line to two-inch line right away to right away, forty feet, precinct one, action required.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Garrett, they're aware of this, and I already got the review approval from AC Engineering.
Who will to approve this?
Second, I'm watching in a second, any more discussion? All your favorites, you can say no.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line number forty-seven, approval of master report.
And this is a time, Judge, for the, for the pool, right?
I have a.
Second.
Yeah, is that a comment?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Uh, any more discussion? All your favorites, you can say no.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries.
Oh, what? Line item number forty-eight, approval of travel request.
She said she, she'll come back and want to. Yeah, to make her.
Somebody has it, no?
You want me to hear it?
Yes.
Yeah, they have, yeah, if you don't, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Travel request number one for Weydysy County Sheriff's, calls as Salasag to attend the Sheriff Association of Texas Sheriff's Executive Leadership Conference in San Marcos, Texas on December eighth through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Action required. Number two, travel request for Weydysy County Sheriff's Department Investigator Sandro Tamayo, David Santana and Jose Casaneda to attend the crime scene investigation and reconstruction course in Park, Texas on December eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, it's non-overnight, action required. Number three, travel request for District Attorney's victim advocate Zoe, uh, who's that, Francesca? Francesca Rodriguez to attend the key personnel and victim assistance coordinator conference in Sugarland, Texas on November thirteenth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, to be paid through the B A U grant number two one zero six four one five, action required. Number four, travel request for County Clerk Susan R. Garza to attend the twenty twenty-four Vital Statistics seventieth Annual Conference Virtual on December tenth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, also to pay registration fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, action required. Those are the four travel requests.
Okay. I guess everything is aligned because it's already come up to us, right? Request forty numbers.
And now there's a process where, I don't think it gets submitted unless it's filled out.
Okay.
Can I entertain a motion to approve travel request?
So who to approve?
I have a motion by Commissioner La Paz, second by Commissioner Tejera, any more discussion? All your favorites, you can say no.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. And the forty-nine, approval of tre, uh, treasurer's report.
So who will to approve this?
I have a motion by Commissioner La Paz to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioners Garcia, any more discussion? All your favorites, you can say no.
Aye.
And all opposed same sign, motion carries. Line item number, uh, fifty, approval of budget amendment.
He has.
Yes.
They're on here, it's free as well, but this is all for the judge to sign. Um, I'm missing his, but he, he's telling me today. And then the sheriff, I told him to sign, but he's, he left. Everything else is complete.
So they didn't resign, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, so can, can we have? Okay, so can, can we have approved, I think we've been through this before. Can we approve the budget amendments as submitted?
Yes, we can.
No, move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signal five percent nine.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item.
Fifty-one.
Number fifty-one, approval of tax collector's report. And this.
The report is, is it in the, the tax collection?
There you want that.
So move to approve it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve tax collector's report. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Figueroa. Any more discussion? All in favor, signal five percent nine.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Fifty-two, review of special claims. Just review, uh, line of fifty-three, review monthly reports on chronic jail. Last report I had just applied was, uh.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, right?
Put this in.
Okay, eighty-two. And then, uh, review of monthly employee overtime. I, I don't look into that one necessarily, but hopefully it's approved.
It, it, I saw it's all, uh, Stone Garden at this point, but it's like seventeen hundred regular overtimes, maybe. Maybe I can see the seven and use it to, it's, but the overtime I saw was mainly Stone Garden or the overtime grants or covering it.
So routine has Stone Garden, um.
So we, we've got a full month.
Work.
Right?
Oh, no.
We, we already have a full month work for this year. We, we'll look at it and see what. There's no comments or questions, then we go line item of fifty-five. Executive session, conferred with, uh, Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding pending counterplay, litigation or negotiations involved, the county's imposed in its interest pursuant to V T C A government code. Section five five one point oh seven one and A and two. Deliberation regarding pending counterplay, litigation or negotiation involved, the county's imposed in its interest pursuant to V T C A government code section five five one point oh seven one. A and two, and conferred with legal counsel regarding purchase of real property, proceeding forth for future use pursuant to V T C A government code. Section five five one point oh seven two. And D, deliberation regarding purchase of real property, proceeding forth for future use pursuant to V T C A code. Section five five one point zero seven two. So if we are going to executive session.
It won't take long.
Okay, uh, can I entertain a, a motion to go into executive session? It is twelve thirty.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Figueroa. We are now in executive.
Okay, so it is one of four and we are back in open session. Can I entertain a motion to go into open session?
So moved to court.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. We are now in open court. Line item number fifty-five, executive session, I mean fifty-six, action relative to executive session.
Judge, there was, there's nothing really for action on A, but on B, I believe that the court was going to, somebody was going to make a motion to authorize the county attorney to submit a letter of intent as discussed in executive session regarding real property.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejada. Is that leading?
Yes, sir.
And there was, there's nothing as to fifty-six C, Judge, but there is, was for the court to deliberate on fifty-five D, and this had to do with purchase of real property. I don't know if you want to open up deliberations in open.
Okay. Make motion?
Yes.
Make the motion. Judge, accept the motion?
Yes, sir.
Make the motion to approve the purchase of real property described as lot twelve Dan Carter subdivision, Willis County, Texas, approximately zero point zero nine acres for the future use benefit of the community of Sebastian in Precinct Four in Willis County, for the amount of seven thousand dollars to be paid to Reconnaissance Capital Holdings LLC and authorize the county judge to execute rec...
Necessary documents.
Necessary documents and the purchase to be paid from the fund of Precinct Two, no, from the capital fund?
Yeah, from the capital fund. All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Can I entertain a second?
Thank you.
You have a motion for B and a motion for C. A for D.
For D, right? And C, no action?
A and C, no action. Real quick on that, just so we can talk about it since I read it out. It's a, it's a small piece of property that, that is located in a butts some county right away, and then adds to that, it gives the county direct access along Colleen and Business seventy-seven, that entire little, little stretch. It's, it's an area that we were going to put a lift station in a while back as part of a fixed farmer bag grant. It didn't go through, but this, this would significantly assist us in doing what we're doing.
All right, I, did I, we voted on both way. All right, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
No.
Right? No?
We haven't voted on second one, babe.
No, not on the second one. Okay, I have, I had a motion from Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejeda. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature on the property, sign. And all opposed, sign. Motion carries. Line item fifty-seven, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Oh, whoa.
Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Tejeda. All in favor, signature on the property, sign. And all opposed, sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. What's next?